Yeah.
Yeah, we're still.
I'm here.
Everybody.
Surely.
Surely, she's. Okay, so it is six o'clock on July 6th Tuesday. And we are opening the special session of the City Council of Carlton. All the way.
All right, Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Council President Shirley Ward-Mullen. Absent. Counselor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Counselor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Counselor Jamie Eglund.
Here.
Counselor Carrie Rhodes. Absent. And Counselor Jeremy Brandow. Also absent. He's supposed to be joining now, so.
All right. Move on down to the agenda items, which is Measure 109 Oregon Suicide Service Act. Oh, R S four seventy five A some options.
Thank you, Mayor. Provided the council did a short memo to introduce this topic. Provided a longer memo that I thought rather than recreate the wheel, I would use now that we received from the Deputy City Attorney for Bernal, which I thought kind of summarized Measure 109 pretty well and pretty succinctly. And so that's in your materials, but the fragment of the speeding, the reason for the speeding is that Measure 109 was passed by the vote. And I believe was November two thousand nineteen. Is coming up on us very fast. State's been visibly working its way through creating regulations for the future licensing of Sulciden Service Centers and Sulciden Processing Facilities. That is going to start in January of two thousand twenty three. Right now, I wouldn't apply any additional license. And the measure did provide that prior to that effective date of licensing applications that local communities can have at least one or two to adopt either an outright prohibition of these facilities that they're down or a temporary prohibition or period of not to exceed two years. In order to provide time within which the community could review what the state is doing and how it's putting elsewhere and whether the community wants to authorize these facilities within the city of Carlton. The problem is that the localities, cities and counties only get one chance every other year or even year during the November election to either adopt a temporary prohibition or a permanent. And next shot they give is two years hence. And so the the deadline for placing local measures, referral measures on the November ballot is August nineteenth. And prior to August nineteen, the ballot title needs to be published. And the seven business day period needs to last without a record challenge to the ballot title. So these are filing requirements that back up the timeframe for making a decision to a point where we're we're pretty close to that decision. We probably put it off, but we certainly not working. We have to, we have to make a filing by the nineteenth. That has to be preceded by what amounts to a ten day objection period to the so they notice we publish in the paper and then we have to publish a notice in in the first available issue. Now, the next available issue is Friday, February one, two. So either one of those issues were to meet that ten day requirement, I believe. But that's why this issue is coming to you. It came out as rapidly, a lot of cities are confronting the same deadlines right now. And so we're a little behind it, but we can try to catch you. So that's why you're here tonight is to talk about those options. You have basically three options before you. One is do nothing. And allow the states, allow Measure 109 to take effect. Result of that is that people can apply for licenses to establish facilities within the city of Carlton, starting in January of two thousand twenty three. And while you will be able to potentially adopt local ordinances that limits some of the time, but time, place, and manner issues. You can adopt reasonable limitations. You wouldn't be able to adopt an outright ban if the voters hadn't spoken. So the second, so that's the first option. Yeah, first option, do nothing, let the states where you want to take effect. And then at any time thereafter, you can adopt time, place, and manner restrictions that relate to you, such as creating that thousand foot buffer from the bottom. That would be an example. But that's not the only one. Option number two, you can adopt a a ordinance that would create a temporary ban on the issuance of licenses within the city of Carlton. That has to be referred to the voters and approved by the voters to take effect. And that you could do the same thing that we should do it. We had prepared emergency ordinances that could be adopted in one evening. So that that is an available option. Option number one, do nothing. Option number two, adopt a referral measure to put a temporary ban two years on the ballot. Option number three, send a referral of a measure to the citizens to create an outright prohibition. That will not expire in two years. It will simply be in effect until some future city council decided to pass a new ordinance allowing. Right? In fact, it might require assistance, referral of that ordinance assistance to unprohibited what they had prohibited by referral. I don't know the answer to that one frankly. Yes. Okay, so option number one, do nothing. Option number two, a temporary ban. Option number three, a permanent ban.
Option number three, that would have to be to go to the digital member and then voted by two.
Yes, then back both option number two and the separate temporary ban and the permanent ban. There are two different options. Both of them require voter approval. So you can do either one or neither. But they both have require voter approval to take. So other than that, that's the basic introduction to this conversation tonight.
Why would we approve that ten nine year?
I think that the core ballot city attorney's memo would recommend that. We did not recommend that, but that's what that memo did recommend was to provide an opportunity to not allow businesses to get started in Carlton prior to being able to see what the what the landscape was going to look like. Either in the form of all of the state ordinances that state regulations that might apply or how it's working elsewhere, whether the future because of problems. So that would be that that's the idea behind temporary ban. It's kind of the way you see mode, right? But then I say no permanently, just kind of keep your cards to your.
So if we do a wait, wait and see. And then they're going to start issuing local items.
Then you would have to go to the book. If you wanted to convert a wait and see into a permanent ban, you'd have to go back to the ballot.
And get people.
And get people to vote again to either renew it to here, could renew it to here. Or you can adopt a permanent ban at that point. So but either way, you'd have, in order for that not to expire, the voters would have to extend it.
So the voters can't decide to pick, but both of those options are on the ballot.
You get one or the other.
Either or option. If we do two or three, the voters, they choose two or three.
No, you can't do both. You got to make.
Okay, we made a decision on a point two or three.
Exactly. Because if you put both on the ballot and both pass, what do you ask? Yep. You have to, you have, you have to choose what what you want. You have to make the initial decision whether to go temporary or permanent or not to do it at all.
So why do we make that decision tonight? If we decide option two or three, and I go to the voter, I'll say then it goes through with the voters. Happen. If that then in fact, there are now at the end of time.
Yep, the ordinance that you have has an effective date. As to the prohibition section, effective date is upon approval by the majority of voters.
Well, the the one, the two year temporary is two year temporary, at the end of two years.
It would expire, yes. The one, the temporary one would expire, they're out for re-look or pass permanent one.
But in that two year time of that temporary ban. So with either of them, you have at least two years for knowing instead of.
Correct.
And then after, say, if it is option two, then after that. The city makes another decision.
The council makes another decision to either.
The county will make, yeah.
Yeah, to refer another measure to the voters. And quite frankly, I think the voters just initially decision that they really wanted to. There's nothing to stop that. For, because there was two ways you can get a measure on the ballot by referral from the council or by initiative from the citizens.
Correct.
So.
And that can only happen, like you said, in the even year.
In the even years in the November election. Yeah.
How's this affected by, I know it's a topic at the county also. Does the county supersede the county?
The county's, county's ordinance won't affect jurisdiction outside of the cities.
While working during the back of city members.
If you actually have a thousand foot little.
If you wanted to do a local ordinance, when the time, place, and manner restriction, you could add a thousand feet for the local. They can be done at any time, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Just before any, any.
Yes, before a facility is located. If if you have waited until after the facility is already located, that has that facility, that restriction will apply.
If I remember correctly, Measure 109 didn't pass by a very high margin.
It's two five, February five or something like that.
Yeah.
Pretty far.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't seventy five votes by best.
Right, it wasn't higher than five.
Oh. But it wasn't, it 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 wasn't terribly close with those ten point difference. But, you know, it was, it was not, not a, a downward blow. I don't know how the citizens of Carlton. I think the county narrowly voted to approve it.
So my vote is the other way.
They narrowly voted to disapprove.
Yes.
It was close, it was really close again, okay.
It's not something you hear a lot of folks talking about.
I think it's kind of a quiet hidden issue because it hasn't really surfaced. It hasn't been the manifestation of it.
When there's still a lot of unknowns, right? You mentioned, there's still some regulations and things that haven't been figured out about clinical times of how long, how long these treatments last, you know, around eight hours.
How long they have to stay at exactly where they can be used.
There's a whole lot of things for sure.
And they, and and the state has until when to do those.
December thirty, and they have, they they have until the end of the year to finalize all their conditions.
Yeah, right, three days later.
But there are guardrails, so to speak, in place by the the measure itself. You know, certain minimum restrictions that we know exist. The rules and regulations, administrative rules that have not been defined by, kind of built in within the framework of the statute. So we already know the statute requires folks to not leave the treatment facilities or service centers like those until they no longer need to be employed. Presumably people that are educated than myself will determine that. But the health authority is also discussing, but further regulations, they will promptly, in order to keep that safe. Something that they're discussing is not allowing patients to transport themselves to a front. Let me have a point.
And that might be a local restriction that potentially not, well, it's a manner restriction. Time place the banner.
How much, but this will impact the city to make the on ballot. Besides how high is the cost.
It's really good and little because it's being done at a time and the county is picking up the cost of all those things. So there's not a special charter, not aware of.
There's not a special charter, it's such a set of staff.
It's, no, it's it's us to draft the stuff and staff time to fill out the forms. And any, if if the council decides it wants to do any public education, then it might be some staff time associated with putting together that and the seven day with the voters. But there's going to be, there's already a fair amount of publicity, like the county measure has been publicized to be in the district. I would talk to, for the apparently the article, believe they're hoping to go with a two year temporary.
Hey, I don't know if they, I think they were going to revisit.
They had the first reading of the ordinance elsewhere. So.
Okay.
I feel, I feel comfortable, I believe. Drop the ordinance with two year temporary. I'd see pros and cons of the other ways. And either way, if we did a full on ban, it's going to have to go back to the voters. Again, same as a few here. So it looks like if we did a permanent ban, then we only have to revisit it at a future council or a citizen initiative comes up.
Correct. Now, if you have a a permanent ban, it's going to require probably another vote of people to unwind, right, decide in future. So but that would, that could be initiated, I believe, by either council or, I believe, initiative petition fact, through a council group, in the constitutional initiative provisions.
If we, just saying, if we went with a permanent ban tonight and most of the voters, and that lost. What we could then, we'd have to wait two years for, I think, our council to decide to maybe go for a two year again or there are no like limit, you know, but what happens if, sorry, if I keep talking out. What happens if, so say if it fails, either one of the options. And if somebody's licensed to do that, we can still, if the initiative fails, we would have the the chance to go with time place.
Well, we could do that now.
You can do that anytime. You do the time, place, and matter restrictions at any time. Obviously, you would do that if you don't have a ban. Right, so you would do that after you.
But wouldn't we want to discuss that maybe before?
Absolutely, absolutely. For instance, a year and a half from now, you might be discussing what kind of place the banner.
Or.
You want to put on in lieu of going to the ballot for another temporary program. So those are, those are, you would have the same options two years from now that you have now.
But if it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass, then your only option, at least a local option, would be to supplement whatever regulations the state has.
So in fact, I mean, the time, the time base and manner restriction for and essentially just disturbing and highly and not allowing, it's like, you know, it's just no different than a ban.
They have to be reasonable regulations. And they have to not have the practical effect of prohibiting it. Right, so the only way you can prohibit it is get the voters to say you're going to prohibit it. So you can't, you you can't establish buffers that leave nowhere in town to go, right? But you can say that you're not going to have a service center in a residential something, you find it. Service center within so many feet of a park. You find that to be a reasonable, yeah, you need to make some findings as to why that's reasonable. But.
How much land does the manufacturing piece need?
I do not know. I wish I could tell you.
Yeah. Make money.
I don't, I think I'm woefully illiterate when it comes to the Sulciden industry. We know a little bit more about the marijuana industry because it's been around in it. It's a little more agricultural. I don't know about Sulciden.
They can do it with substantially small. Then you need like a small facility. I don't know, there are big commercial operations that will be coming in to grow and produce. We're the first state in the country to do more of something like this, so. Doesn't take very much space.
Okay, that's different then, yeah.
I mean, you have a mushroom operation out in Appleton, grows a lot of mushrooms in a small, in a small set of bars.
Yeah. Coming out there.
Yeah. Not that big an operation for the amount of mushrooms produced. Now, I don't know what Sulciden mushrooms may be much more difficult. I assume they're more, they're more difficult.
Please note, those are culinary mushrooms.
Yeah, a little way, but they're probably, they probably pop up with you like. I don't know about Sulciden.
In my yard, yeah.
I feel good about putting it to the voters. I think if there's a consensus, whether it's, and I feel good about unlimited or two year, so I'm open for. But I think it should go to the citizens.
Can I, can I speak?
Oh, sorry, hi, Jeremy, yes.
I I think that's a terrible precedent for a city to be voting against the state in the first place, I think. Can you guys hear me in the first place?
Yes.
Okay. Anyways, I feel like this is a terrible terrible precedent to be doing something like this and banning outright. I think it's something passed on the state that we should go along with that and follow their policies regardless, whatever it is. We know there are very good research on on the put, on the good benefits of marijuana that was banned for such a long time. And just now people are using. And I feel like it's it's the same with mushrooms and with the psilocybin. There are a lot of benefits that we don't know, but researchers are happening right now to find out how, to how people, I know depression and there is like, just alternative to pain, pain management. So I think we all here are not doctors. And I don't know how we can discuss like banning something that could potentially help people. Like, we're not talking about people getting high for fun. We're talking about potentially benefiting people and citizens in Carlton. And I, yeah, I I don't know how that make any sense with, we are a wine town. We have, we we got drunk thriving, we got other issues that could happen in town. But yeah, we allow alcohol to have to to be consumed here and most of the businesses are alcohol related. It makes no sense for a town to be banning something like this, especially when we don't have any data. Our package doesn't have any information about people dying from overdose or anything like that. And I think we should leave it to the state to decide it. And we have decided in the voting. So it makes no sense for us to be interrupting interrupting that right now. I feel like this is a non-issue and we shouldn't be doing nothing. No. Not discussing, I I believe we have discussed that in a state statewide. And that's why we passed that issue. And that's my opinion.
I understand what Jeremy's saying. I think personally, I would like to see a two year ban just until the state gets their ducks in a row and understands what they're going to do going forward.
Yeah, the state is still in the process of getting themselves totally set up. So.
But I think it's fair to say they've adopted the bulk of the regulations, the initial regulations.
Surrounding licensing. Yes, that's all the reasons.
Yeah.
Be banned it because this town is, the size that it is, then say McMinnville wants to go for it. They're three, four times our size with Forest Grove, Forest Grove's in different county. Or Newburgh wants to do, they can do the facilities. And if someone from this town needed that treatment, it's only a six mile away. I just think it would be for the safety and just the overall just overall for the community. That's where I am with the ban and all.
And I think in a sense, I appreciate what Pastor Randale was saying, but we are also, we're not deciding, we're we're letting the community decide what they would like to see. You know, I don't, we don't have the numbers in front of us of what the percentage of voters of Carlton voted on Measure 109. You know, I'm sure it's out there, but we're giving them the opportunity to have a say of what they would like to see in their, their community.
And that's what I needed, and I have mine, that's very true.
So. And I think that it's fair to do the two year also to to wait and see because there there is some research, but we're the first state to do it, you know, so there's still a lot more research and information that'll probably be coming out about this.
So we know anything about McMinnville or never?
McMinnville has a meeting at seven o'clock tonight, it's on the agenda. I don't know, I think. I don't know whether Newburgh's active yet or.
I have not heard that they, that you can enhance.
We can get down to time tonight, we can go home and zoom in.
You could, you could.
I think, I understand again what Jeremy's saying, but I do think it needs to go to the public, as Kevin said. For vote. I would, I would support the two year. That just seems like a nice, it's a good compromise. Because I take what, I take Jeremy's point, but also we're, we're still waiting for the state to get themselves totally set up too. We don't know what this is going to look like from the state's perspective in in some ways. And this is not something I really want to, that I don't think we want to just dive into without having some recourse if things happen to go south. The odds are pretty good that it won't because they are checking on it, but you know, a two year, two year wait and see is is gives us a chance to look at it and evaluate. And then move on from there. Do we have a motion?
Do we have an ordinance?
Twenty twenty two, seven thirty nine.
Or either option.
Or whichever option you, the motion is.
Left it open.
I just wanted to say, we keep talking about voting, but we already voted as a state. Why, why choose to be, to go away from the state's decisions? Like, we, we are part of Oregon. Like, we shouldn't be, everything that happens in the state, we're going to choose not to do it or do it regardless. It doesn't make any sense. I feel like it's more work and it's, it 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 just doesn't make any sense. And why would Carlton vote back when the state is going forward?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, but it's kind of the way the government's set up. I mean, states can supersede federal regulations on certain things and cities can supersede states in certain things. So there's those checks and balances built in. So you can make the same argument of why doesn't the state just go along with every federal law or regulation? So see what you're saying, but.
I can't think of anything that we have passed in the state that we haven't passed in the city or chose not to. And for the most part, Oregon just goes with the like, I I cannot, I cannot find an examples. And we keep talking about like banning constantly, but like, does anyone has any bad information about this, this procedure? Do we have any? Do we have any data? Do you have any that's related to psilocin?
I don't know that we have any data for or against it. We don't have any data, as far as I know. There may be some out there, but it's not it's, it's not been made available. Well, it's probably available somewhere. But until we have it in front of us and we don't have time to we're working on short time right here is kind of the problem. Um, we have to make a decision within the next couple of days on this, and, and tonight is what it amounts to. I'm looking at this as being, uh, because we don't have the data that you're asking about, in fact, um, I would be looking at this as kind of a compromise to give us some time in, in a way to buy us some breathing space and figure out if it is what we want to do. Or if the state, you know, the state may come back to us in two years and say, yeah, we're not real happy with this. And then we're stuck with it, so.
I don't, I don't think we are stuck. We, we can always make changes. We can, we can make changes, other state can make changes.
We, we can.
I, I think, I, I think regardless of the issue, this is a terrible precedent. Like, if we, if things pass in the state, we're just gonna choose not to do it in the city, and I feel like this is one of the first ones, and we can just keep going. But this is my opinion. My, my vote is to do nothing, and if this is a waste of, waste of time.
Hey, guys.
Well, it looks like we have one vote left, state, but my vote is to ban it, and we have three votes. Do the two-year. Yeah, just briefly.
Well, you would, you'd be, you'd be opposed to a two-year ban?
You would like to see it across the board.
Across the board ban. But even with, even if I'm opposed to the two-year ban, you have one there, one here, and three there, so I mean, that's, uh, whatever. And I think, am I wrong in my thinking?
You will need a second meeting, however.
This is the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second meeting regardless?
Unless it's unanimous.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the requirement that you can only pass the ordinance at one meeting if you have any.
Do we have time for next week? Would that be?
Yes, we do have time for next week. Uh, you would need to, would need to be next week.
We're not meeting August second.
We're meeting on the next.
Yeah, you'd probably need to have another meeting, uh, either this week or Tuesday if, if, if the first, if the ordinance passes at a first reading, it would require a second.
So then, let's say, I mean, just fabrication here, say we have a meeting in two nights. And surely, Harry, you know, show up back.
Uh, past once.
Past twice with.
It's just gotta be another.
Except for, uh, each other times, and then you have the same.
You don't have tonight, we're good to go.
Under the charter, the only way you can really pass ordinance in one night is with unanimous votes. So, and, and the purpose of that is to allow further discussion and contemplation if there's a negative vote, uh, or more than one negative.
And that would be anything that we, we vote on?
Yeah, any ordinance.
It's ordinance.
It's ordinance.
Okay.
That's a charter limitation.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make it, but I don't know how to say it, I guess. Um, I move to, do I say consider the first reading? Okay, with the possible second reading of an ordinance declaring a temporary ban of psilociva service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products declaring an emergency. Um, do I need to say the ordinance number?
Yeah.
Um, ordinance number two zero two two dash seven three nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash seven three nine, the ordinance declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers, the manufacture of psilocybin products brings such ordinance to the voters and declaring ordinance.
I'm not in favor.
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call, okay. Roll call.
Do I have to call the names of the?
Yes. No.
Okay. All right, Meredith Watkins?
Yes.
Counselor Kevin Skipper?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Gary Brentow?
No.
Counselor Gray Erickson?
No.
Counselor Jamie Agment, yes.
That's all you can do tonight. That you can, so. To buy another special, it's everybody's schedule.
We need to do that.
We have to do that.
We need to adjourn the meeting.
You can do it on or off the record before or after.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Why don't you have staff talk to the different council members and see what they. We have a council.
You have to put it out like hours and then.
Yeah.